Alright. But you know, sometimes you just gotta look in the mirror, you know? Alright, so, let me look at this.
He's right here. Commissioner.
Hi. How are ya?
Uh, it was great. That's alright. We'll do it again. Turn this off.
Your necklace, man.
When it comes to safety.
Where's your necklace?
I gave it to more.
I don't see him wearing it.
He's got it right here.
Do you have someone doing the invocation?
I call to order the regular session meeting of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, November fourteenth, two thousand seventeen at six thirty P M. Roll call, please.
Mayor Alahucesis.
Here.
Vice Mayor Banther.
Here.
Commissioner Seber.
Here.
Commissioner Kikta is absent in excuse. Commissioner Carr.
Here.
Tonight's invocation will be given by Pastor Parkinson. If you please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegion.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you this evening very mindful of the fact that every day is a precious gift. On this day, we meet to address the issues of our city. We ask that you guide and direct our thoughts, ideas, and decisions that come before us. Provide us with wisdom, guidance, and direction as we seek to make the proper decisions on behalf of the citizens of Tarpon Springs. We pray for those who have the responsibility of protecting our city. We ask that you watch over them as they in turn watch over us. And as the Thanksgiving holiday approaches, we are thankful for life and for liberty. We are thankful to live in a country where we are free to enjoy the peaceful assembly of one another as we are yet this evening. Thank you for hearing each of our prayers as we seek to do what is both noble and right in your eyes. These things we pray in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Pledge of Allegion to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our commission meeting tonight. We are now going to the public comments of the items that will not be discussed this evening. If you have any comments, please come forward to the podium. I'm sorry? I can't hear.
No, it's not on the agenda. It's not on the agenda.
That thinks it's not on the agenda. Item number one is a presentation forward. Panellus.
Yes, my name is Panayotti Culyas, five nine five Peninsula Avenue. It's very hard for me as a thirty year old to come up here and doing this. Okay, there's a lot of pressure involved. But, we have, I've had an officer in your police department, who has constantly been bothering me for over fifteen years. And, his name is Officer Gassen. Okay? The man has done things illegally against court ordered injunctions to have me embarrassed. On April seventh of two thousand seventeen, I was in a public area at the first Friday, at the Johnny's Tap Tap House. Meanwhile, I had one of my offices there before, because I actually staffed for Johnny's Tap House. Okay? So the officer, with one of my relatives involved, who knows? But, long story short, I was arrested that night illegally, which it didn't apply to public places with that injunction. Okay? You have an officer out there who can't get over the fact that when he pulled me over when I was seventeen years old, he lost a traffic case. He's constantly bothering me. There's been a seven year gap. This man has also been involved, and I look right you in the eye, for planning marijuana with me, with Officer DiGiorgio, back when I was, back in two thousand nine and two thousand and ten. It's nonstop, constant harassment. So, I'm a patriot of the city. I'm not going anywhere. I'm really not. But, I do feel it's a responsibility of you guys to get those officers that are going above and beyond the law illegally to have them reprimanded. I'm here to ask for the resignation of him effective immediately, without pension. This is something I want you guys all to discuss. And finally, you know, as a thirty year old living on my side of town, I want to talk, Mark. Mr. Mark LaCoras. Two nine eight Peninsula Avenue. Does that ring a bell to you?
Not a question and answer period.
Just, this is comments, not a question and answer.
Okay. Well, two nine eight Peninsula Avenue was the house that LaCoras owned with his son. And, his son has been known to do illegal things out of there at the time. So, I sit there and ask, this is the same man who's brought up department together, and now a lot of the officers he's hired are head officials of the department. I'm tired of being the harassed person. You know me well. Your children used to come to my birthday parties when I was young. Okay? So, as well as you, I truly believe, and I know that you're the string puller behind everybody. Okay? So I also ask with the stuff that you have, and knowingly, your son also worked under the table over at the Tarpon Liquor Store. That's stealing from everybody here who pays taxes. I don't know about you, but as a city manager, I as a person of the city do not agree with that. So I'm asking for everybody here to look at Mr. LaCoras as well, and ask for his resignation. You know, you guys might sit here and think I, I'm an upset person because I am upset. But that comes with many, many years of being bothered. So with that said, I'm gonna let it be. And, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Any other public comments on this, tonight? Here now, thank you very much. Item number one is a presentation forward. Panellus, Mr. Blanton.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Board of Commissioners. I'm Whit Blanton. I'm the Executive Director of Forward Panellus. And we are the Metropolitan Planning Organization for Panellus County, so we're responsible for countywide transportation planning, and work very closely with our partners at the county and the cities and the Florida Department of Transportation. I'm here tonight, in part because every year I like to go around to all the cities, so I like to present myself and give you an opportunity to ask any questions of me about transportation or countywide land use planning. But I want to bring an issue to your attention that is going to need some city action in the near future. And that is the US nineteen corridor and a potential for an interchange to be built at Tarpon Avenue. And we've talked about this in the past. As you know, the Florida Department of Transportation with direction from the MPO and from the Board of County Commissioners, has built a series of interchanges on US nineteen from Largo North, up through Clearwater at five eighty is the furthest north of those interchanges. The department is scheduled to begin construction of the interchange at Curlew Road to elevate US nineteen over Curlew Road in two thousand twenty. That'll start construction in that year. And then shortly thereafter, Tampa Avenue or Tampa Road would be under construction a couple of years after that. That money does not have construction funding yet, but that project does have right of way and design money that's been funded. The Department of Transportation and our agency have been involved in a process of evaluating whether we should look at future interchanges north of Tampa Road. Our position is that we don't believe there should be any future interchanges built at Klosterman, Nebraska, Alderman Roads, because they dead end essentially into Lake Tarpon. And they don't provide the same east-west benefit that Curlew and Tampa Road have. The reason that I bring this to your attention tonight is because in the last week, the Department of Transportation has released its Strategic Intermodal System Cost Feasible Plan. And US nineteen is on the Strategic Intermodal System. And that means that it gets a larger share of state transportation dollars by being on the Strategic Intermodal System. And when they put the US nineteen at Tarpon Avenue interchange on the SIS or Strategic Intermodal System Cost Feasible Plan, it raised a real red flag to us that their intention is to go ahead and put that interchange in. And I've heard from you in the past, I think I was here last year, where you were pretty clear that you didn't want that interchange to be built at Tarpon Avenue. And, it is currently in our long range transportation plan to have that interchange. But we are beginning the process of developing a new long range transportation plan that we'll adopt in November of two thousand nineteen. And our intent is to not put that interchange in by then. We also would like to take out the interchanges to the south at Alderman and Klosterman and Nebraska, although because money has already been spent on those, that may be tougher to do. They're already funding design and will be looking at right of way acquisition in the next few years. So we may not be able to roll back those projects, but no money has been spent on Tarpon Avenue at that interchange. So in the next few months, what I would ask is that the city go on record with a statement of policy regarding whether it would like to see an interchange built at that location or not. In the meantime, what we've committed with FDOT to do is to evaluate different concepts for how we manage growth and traffic in the US nineteen quarter. And this is a big issue because Pasco County, a few years ago, took out the interchanges in Pasco County on US nineteen, preferring instead to deal with traffic and redevelopment in a different manner. And what we've seen with the interchanges further to the south is that if you're not right at that interchange, if you're a business that is located between interchanges, it's been a real, it's had a real negative impact on economic development and jobs and businesses along that corridor. Because of limited access and visibility and a whole host of other issues. So we're in the process of working with DOT to study the economic impacts of those interchanges and look at the potential for economic growth in the US nineteen corridor. We're also looking to initiate Regional Express Bus Transit from Tarpon Springs south into the Gateway area and from South County up into the Gateway area along US nineteen. So we know that there's a need for different forms of transportation in the US nineteen quarter. But that interchange at Tarpon Avenue, for instance, is scheduled to be about a hundred million dollars to construct. And we think that there's a better way to spend a hundred million dollars. In addition, the interchanges to the south, all told, would be roughly about a billion dollars if you combine all them. And again, we think there's a better way to spend a billion dollars of transportation revenues. So what I would like to do is, is open it up to any questions or comments you have of me. But in the next, I would say, two to three months, what we would like to do is work with you to see if the city would like to take a position formally on an interchange potential at US nineteen and Tarpon Avenue. And then we could present that to the department and work with them on some alternatives to building an interchange. There may be some improvements that are needed in traffic flow, but they could be done with sensitivity towards the existing businesses and to the importance that road has as a gateway into downtown and to the sponge docks of the community. So with that, I'll open it up to see if you have any questions of me, and I'd be happy to come back at a future time with a more detailed presentation if you would like that.
Mr. Blanton, thank you for the update, and thank you for coming to Tarpon Springs to inform us again. Building an overpass on US nineteen is gonna do, is gonna harm our local businesses. It's not something that we want. Actually, like I said, as we discussed earlier before the meeting, that's not going to help the, the transportation at all. Because once you get to Pasco County, US nineteen is not going to be considered highway. It's gonna be a local, a local road. So what good is that going to do if we build an overpass here? It's gonna stop right on the, on the county line. The transportation is supposed to be designed to, to help the businesses, not to hurt the business. So that's not something that we want to do. And of course, we're gonna do whatever we can to stop it. And, we will prepare a resolution to be on the record that we're gonna have a policy to stop that. And I'd like to hear from my fellow commissioners.
Well, I definitely agree. Yes, thank you for the update. And, heading west on Tarpon Avenue dead ends also. So what sense does it make to have an interchange at Tarpon Avenue? Actually, even Klosterman, there's not much further to go west. Alderman maybe, but I, I feel like even Klosterman would be a waste. I know that they've spent money, but that's a lot more money to be spent if they do decide to do the interchange. But definitely against anything on Tarpon Avenue and, and what good would it do if we're dead ending into the bayous and the river coming west off of Tarpon? And it definitely would hurt our businesses and our tourist industry.
I think part of the rationale is DOT looks at US nineteen as a linear corridor. And a lot of times, you know, they're in their offices in Tampa and they're not really thinking about the context of the community.
They should look at a map.
Yeah. And they've come out with new policies that I think would support what you're, what you're suggesting, that you've got to put the right transportation project in the right place, given the context of that, that environment.
Right.
That's the argument we would make.
Thank you.
Commissioner Carr.
Thanks. You know, I'm gonna need some more information on this, but I completely disagree with the mayor and one of the commissioners that just made a comment. Yes, I do agree that there would be an impact of the businesses that are on Tarpon Avenue. I'm not sorry, not Tarpon Avenue, but on US nineteen. But I don't think downtown Safety Harbor, Clearwater Beach, downtown Dunedin or other cities have seen a detrimental impact to their downtown or sponge docks tourist areas because of nineteen being updated. Tarpon is a destination area you're gonna drive to Tarpon Springs to visit because that's where you want to go. It's not an area you're driving down US nineteen to say, oh, here's Tarpon Springs, let's pull over and stop here. I completely agree with that. It does have a large impact on the businesses on US nineteen, because I've seen it have impact down in Clearwater and other areas where it's been updated already because they just, the businesses disappeared during construction. So that is a concern, for sure. But to say it has an impact in the local area, I think that study needs to be done and proposed before we make a board wide resolution from the city to say, we can't have this because hearsay that's gonna affect the sponge docks and our downtown businesses. I don't think that's prudent. And if we're able to have government funds from other agencies coming in, there's an opportunity to increase safety, to increase traffic flow for North County residents. I mean, these are areas that for improvement throughout North Penellas that we have an opportunity to look at. So, I don't think we should rush to this to say there's a resolution. Let's go ahead and say it's gonna hurt all of our businesses. I don't think that's prudent at all or respectful to the residents here in Tarpon Springs.
What we would like to do, I guess, if I can follow up to that, is at least send the letter to the Department of Transportation saying that we have some concerns or reservations about them putting that interchange on the Strategic Intermodal System Cost Feasible Plan. And just going on the record, because when they release that plan, we have a window of opportunity to comment on it. And we could request, and I think they would be very happy to work with us, that kind of additional information that you're requesting in terms of what is the potential benefit? What is the potential community impact? And help us work with some alternative solutions for that. But I have a feeling that we've got a little bit of a window of opportunity to, to send that letter. And I would like to send it with some support from the city. But maybe if you all are not comfortable, we don't have to have a formal resolution stating unequivocally, we don't want this interchange, but raising some issues, raising some concerns. That may be one way to handle it. Just a, just a thought.
You know, another concern I have though is all the turn lanes from Palm Harbor to Tarpon Springs where people are cutting across and getting in accidents regularly. That's a huge safety issue for all of us that drive down US nineteen. I do it two or three times a day and someone pulls out for me multiple times.
Right.
Where I see accidents multiple, almost happening, and then accidents also that do happen. And these are lives that are affected. I mean, these are parents, these are siblings, these are someone's kid that's getting flipped because of, you've got someone that wasn't paying attention cutting across nineteen. So, to be able to see those go away, and if it's a U-turn or something that we force these residents, I mean, it would cause more traffic issues, but is it really worth someone's innocent life to, to get killed? I don't think it is to have those in there. So, I would prefer to have that also studied too, to look at removing those left-hand turns out of the medians on nineteen. From my standpoint, I don't know how the rest of the board feels about it.
I strongly believe that it's hurting the business of Dunedin, Dunedin, Largo, and many other places. And, if we, if ever happens, Tarpon Springs is gonna be hurt.
Both we strongly believe it, but we're not going off hard numbers of like what is happening.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's a different thing. I mean, I-
Vice Mayor.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Whit. And I, I do appreciate each year you coming to give us that, that, that stuff. Often large projects like, like this kind of go on and on, and we don't find out about them, even on the county level, until it's, until it's too late. And I appreciate the proactive stance that you've brought here. From day one, I've opposed any interchanges north of where they have them now. We're different than Dunedin as far as where our downtown is located, both in size and as well, we are the most northern intersection in Penellas County. I cannot see in what sense it makes to spend a hundred, what's a million you said dollars or-
Hundred million dollars, right.
Billion with a B?
No, with an M, M.
M, M. Well, one hundred million dollars in the most northern intersection in, 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 in Penellas County. That, that's just my opinion. I would be in full support of a board, of a board of, of, of resol- resolution to say that we're, that we're opposed to, that we're opposed to this. To Commissioner Carr's point, I'm open to any study that, that needs to be done, that we need to have. But, I, I've been up here for a minute and I, I just cannot see with our geography, with our, with our size, with our location in the county, how a one hundred million dollar overpass would affect us. I've been in a car accident, almost died at Alderman in US nineteen. My, with my truck, that flipping got totaled. Honest to God, if an overpass had been there, because it was not caused by a turn lane, it was caused by a senior citizen, my, my, my truck would have smashed into, into the overpass. I at least had a turn lane to over, to turn over into. So, you know, accidents kind of don't hap- accidents happen on their own. It's not one or the other. So, I don't know how well that would stop accidents besides turn lane intersections like Commissioner Carr brought up. But anyway, I, I am absolutely opposed to any overpass in Tarpon Springs, completely. And I support that resolution. And if they move forward, I won't be on the board at the time probably. But I would support any legal action we have, exercise our rights to hold them up in court. Because I believe it would be that detrimental to, to the city of Tarpon Springs.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Mr. LaCoras, looks like we have a consensus to prepare a resolution. Thank you very much.
We'll be happy to work with your staff. And, and if I can just clarify a little bit, how this works. The Strategic Intermodal System is something that the state DOT doesn't really have to consult with local governments on. Because it's an elevated type of facility, and they get the lion's share of the funding for, for transportation. But, if we don't put it in our long range transportation plan, the federal government tends to side with us. So, it's, it's, we do have a say. But, if we put an interchange in there, then DOT will, will go ahead and do it, and there's not a lot of consultation. If we take it out, then it forces the issue. So I would rather work with DOT from a position of strength than a position of weakness. And I think the position of strength is, it's not in there, you have to convince us that it needs to be in there, or demonstrate that there are other solutions that are preferable to the interchange. And then that, that puts the onus on DOT. If instead we leave it in there and, and ask them not to build it, there's really not much leverage that we have. So that's, and they've been a really good partner in the last year compared to previous years. But that's the kind of thing that can change with the secretary. And we have a new secretary at District Seven who's been very great. He's talked about the importance of working with communities. But I don't think we had that same message from the previous secretary. So this is why I have some concern that, that we need to be vocal and, and at least very clearly express what is in our desire and what we ask for in terms of any kind of study or any kind of additional information. So we'll be happy to work with you and your staff to prepare a resolution and ask for any additional study or, or data that we think's important to support that.
And thank you for your assistance.
Thank you for your time tonight.
And now I'd like to call for public comments. Are there any public comments on this item? Here now, thank you very much. We now go into the consent agenda. Item number two is the attorney fees invoice fifty-five zero eighty-four. Three is special events. Light up the bayou on December twenty-four, two thousand seventeen. B is the Epiphany Day on January sixth, two thousand eighteen. C is Dr. Martha King Junior's birthday celebration on January thirteenth, two thousand eighteen. Number four is the award file, number eighteen zero zero forty-five dash and dash R S, single source purchase of E I M Electric Exchurators, Parts and Services. Number five is the award file, number eighteen zero zero forty-two dash and dash R S, single source purchase of lift station supervisor control and data acquisition, SCADA system. Number six is the award file, number eighteen zero zero twenty-seven dash C dash R S, police equipments, violence, I T supplies and related items through purchasing cooperation, cooperative of American contract number R F P three dash one forty dash sixteen. Number seven is the award file, eighteen zero zero thirty-nine dash and water and wastewater revenue sufficiency analysis and comprehensive impact feat study. Number eight is the award file, number eighteen zero zero thirty-five dash and dash R S, single source purchase of on base maintenance and support. Number nine is the award file, eighteen zero zero forty-three dash and dash R S, single source purchase of pumps and repair parts, wires. Number ten is the increase file, number sixteen zero zero seventeen dash C dash R S, liquid carbon dioxide through Sarasota County contract number fifteen thirty-one twenty-six zero one zero zero. And the last one, number eleven, is to reject the responses to the bid number eighteen zero zero thirty dash B dash C M Generators Mobile Trailer Mountain. Any items that you'd like to pull for discussion? Seven? Okay. Any other? Alright. Any other questions on, on the other items? Are there any public comments of the items through two through eleven with the exception of seven? Here now, I need a motion, please.
Second.
In roll call.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther? Mayor Alahucesis?
Yes. Item number seven. Commissioner Carr?
Yeah, Mark, I don't know. I've just got some questions here. It's for impact studies for water and wastewater. Is this just for water and wastewater? Because the way it reads, it sounds like the other ones need to be updated too. Based on, I believe what the charter says. So, it looks like Ron's gonna come, let us know. Thanks.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Ron Herring, Finance Director. Your question was the water and sewer-
It's, is the study just for the water and sewer impact fee? Is, I mean, is it for the other ones also?
It's two separate things. It's a water and sewer or wastewater revenue sufficiency study. It provides an update on our water and sewer financial operations. What we're hoping, this will give us another two full years of data with the water plant under full operation. The last study was done about a year and a half ago, so this will provide us with more current and financial information with the two thousand seventeen actuals and also incorporating the two thousand eighteen budget. The study determines, you know, what the appropriate rate should be to cover the cost of operation, maintenance, capital requests, while ensuring the minimum fund balances met and also the bond covenants. And then that's one study. And then that's one study. The other one is the impact fee study. The city is required every three years to have an impact fee study for the, for the, uh, police, fire, library, recreation, general government impacts. The study will help to determine what the impact fee rates will be for those respective rates. The other one is the water and sewer impact fee study. The last time we did that one was in two thousand twelve. So I thought we'd go ahead and do that one again too. And one of the advantages is doing both of them, doing the, what we call the, the fire, police, library, park and rec and general government along with the water and sewer. The, combining those, we're able to save about nine thousand dollars on the cost of them.
Okay. Do they, do they compare them to like other cities to see where we fall in play with that?
Yes, they go through the whole county, they compare it to the county, they compare them to the state to see what's being assessed for the impact fees.
Okay. So it is incorporating all the impact fees and not just the water and the wastewater then?
Correct.
Thanks.
Okay.
Any other questions on item number seven? Are there any public comments on the item number seven? Here now, I need a motion for number seven.
Approve.
Second.
In roll call please.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seaver?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor, who's this?
Yes, thank you. We are now going to the, uh, item number 12 is to increase bid one seven zero one four zero dash B dash CM tree removal and related services. Steph report, Commissioner Licorice.
Again, this is pretty much due to the hurricane, um, is in the backup. Obviously it's good we haven't had a tree removal, um, company on contract. Because if we hadn't, to clear the tremendous Craig Park, the cemetery would probably be still closed, um, a lot. So, so this is to increase the cost. Hopefully we're going to get a lot of this money back as we turn in for Irma. But this is a strictly tree-laid disservice to Irma. And by using the company we had on there and had originally a seventy thousand dollar amount, bringing them in to supplement with city crews is why we got everything back. I know the people thought it was a long time, but as you see, some other places are still working on it. This tree service and their equipment, um, they didn't take off to South Florida and desert us. They stayed with us and they supplemented our crews, um, to get the tremendous, you know, the tremendous work they had to do, especially at the cemetery in Craig Park, um, to get those facilities up. So that's why we have to ask for the increase because then again, we'll apply for any hurricane money and reimbursements for that, to get that money back.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Licorice. Actually took us six weeks to clean the whole area, the whole city, which is phenomenal compared to the other cities. They're still fighting for it. Uh, what's the process of, uh, getting reimbursement for FEMA?
Um, finances were, is gathering everything together. So we've got extensive rules and reports and documentation to do. Um, it, it's based in finance, all the different departments who have the thing, compile their information, get it to finance. Finance puts all of it together. Um, it's a very long, time-consuming and precise process. So, um, so that process is going on and everybody's aware of the process and what to do. So we'll be putting all that together and, uh, submitted it. And, uh, again, on the people we have doing it have the competence. So, um, you know, there's not rejections from it for not doing the paperwork properly. We've been trained and ready and, uh, Michelle Memes, um, in, uh, finance is the one who's, who's heading up and gathering all the materials from all the department, put together, working with FEMA, FEMA and the people work with us on what forms and what they want. And, uh, you know, our documentation from the people who are riding around with those trucks and documenting, all that was done. So we have airtight, um, materials that we're sending in so we get the maximum reimbursement of the tax payers money for the city.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, have a comment? Okay.
I was just wondering if this will include any, uh, tree debris that's still out there? I mean, I still see like, for example, on Roosevelt, a lot of debris.
We're, we're still, we haven't finished, we're still, we're still hitting those pockets that, that weren't there. We're still identifying them. So we're not complete, we're ninety-five, maybe more, but, but we know we make a list today of the pockets and, uh, and that'll still be getting those too. That's more, that's not on these people.
That's not yet, just the.
That's the other group, the other group is still.
Should be texting, uh, Vice Mayor because he's, uh, he's been handling that.
They're, they're still working and we got, I know that one's on, that's on the list. And we've still got a couple of little pockets on, on like Gulf Road, Florida Avenue. There's a whole list, they've done little pockets. We're going to be doing a sweep and picking those along with, there's still some more pockets of some fence material and that sort of material. We've still got those pockets, but we're, we're pretty much winding it down and, uh, hopefully you'll see most all of that gone real soon.
Okay, thank you.
No comments? Okay, thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? Here now, need a motion please.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seaver?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther? Mayor, who's this?
Yes, thank you. We are now going to the item number thirteen, which is the award file eighteen zero zero thirty-eight dash C dash RS water meter and backflow prevention materials and accessories to Pinellas County bed number one five six dash zero three eighty-four dash B. Steph report.
Again, this is, this is on there strictly for cost. As you know, we've probably got about seventy percent of the meters, the read meters now, um, probably close to seventy percent just to continue to try to get the hundred percent of the read meters. All you know, when we've had complaints about usage of water and stuff, those new read meters can provide you computer data of every bit of water that's used. Um, the time of day, um, everything. Um, we've, we started a long time ago, this commission directed a slow process. Obviously you see the cost, so you can't do it overnight. Um, this will hopefully get us a long way to getting that last thirty percent of the read meters. They're more efficient. Again, they can provide information to the people. So we're going to piggyback off this good contract at Pinellas County and keep going to bring the percentage up again with the goal that this commission set a long time ago of having a hundred percent of these meters in the city.
Mr. Licorice, is that the same company as we use in the past? In other words, we don't have to have different parts of it, right?
Yes.
Thank you. Any question? Any public comments on this item? Here now, I need a motion?
Second.
In roll call please.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seaver?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor, who's this?
Yes, thank you. We are now going to the item number fourteen, the ordinance two thousand seventeen dash thirty-two idle speed no wake zone. This is the first reading. The city attorney will read the ordinance.
Mayor Commissioners, ordinance two thousand seventeen dash thirty-two, an ordinance to the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending chapter five, boat stocks and waterways, article one in general, by adding a new section entitled, section five dash seven point one, establishment of special slow-speed minimum wake zones and special idle speed no wake zones on the Anclot River, providing for repeal of ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, providing for severability, providing for inclusion in the code of ordinances of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, and providing for the effect of this ordinance. It was the first reading of ordinance two thousand seventeen dash thirty-two by title only.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Board of Commissioners. Uh, several months back, the mayor was receiving complaints from residents, mainly from the Anclot Point Townhomes. Uh, we had a meeting in his office and wanted to look at this, uh, problem on the river with boats coming at high rates of speed around what they described as a blind curve. That area is right up in that area there. Uh, so when I took this on, I, I looked at, I got with the chief and with the city manager. I said, if we're going to look at that one blind curve there and also the approaching of the alternate nineteen bridge on the, on the east side of it. We already have an existing, uh, ordinance out this way that goes down through the sponge docks, which makes that an idle, uh, speed no wake zone. However, there's nothing to the west of the bridge or to the east of the bridge that slows any vessels down that way. So I said, well, if we're going to look at that blind curve, let's take a look at this one, this one, this one, and this one up here, all the way out to the US nineteen bridge, as well as the two other bridges. The bridges being the, uh, the train trussel, as we all used to know it as, or now the Pinellas Trail Bridge, uh, and also the US nineteen bridge up here. So with that in mind, I started working with, uh, FWC out of Tallahassee who oversees the waterway management. And you have to jump through all the hoops and everything that, and criteria that are established through those, uh, or state statutes. If you see here, the boating restricted areas. So three twenty-seven point forty-six outlines those and I sit here and read it. But what, the one thing, we don't have a lot of traffic, we don't have a lot of, uh, crashes in that area, but we have statutory authority here. All right, the statutory authority allows for any blind curve or a narrow passage in there or the approaches of the bridges. So this is what we're, I started looking at. And looking at idle speed and a slow speed minimum wake zones. You know, there's different definitions of those. You know, basically me as a non-boater, you, I probably wouldn't be able to tell what the big difference is between them. Idle speed no wake zone, you're settled down in the water, using just enough power to maintain steerage way. Uh, slow speed minimum wakes a little bit faster. They say it's probably anywhere from about five to seven, uh, miles per hour. The other one's probably two to four, five miles per hour. So those are the things that we're looking at and what we're going to try to establish in this area. The three bridges that we talked about again are the alternate nineteen bridge on the east side. The west side of it's already established. Uh, it allows for, in, in statute, this is, allows for three hundred feet of a bridge, uh, approaching a bridge, so, or a bridge fender. This is pretty, pretty easy, now all three of them fall into that with a minimum clearance twenty-five feet of a horizontal clearance of less than one hundred feet. So then we also looked at the narrow bend adjacent to Anclot Point Townhomes and I wanted to look at those three other bends as well. So looking at that, I worked with, uh, FWC in Tallahassee. They actually came down here and rode the river for me. And they looked at everything and they said, well, the one curve in front of the Anclot Townhomes does meet the criteria. The other three do not. Cause you can get around those areas safe enough, wide enough to where you could always see the vessels. Uh, so I looked at that and then I said, okay, well, what about the bridges? Said all those are codified and those are easy. All you need to do is adopt the, the language of the, uh, statute into an ordinance and those will be part of it. City manager asked me to look at the, uh, contributory canal that's off of the dog park. And we have the, the new canoe kayak launch in there. So I wanted to get that in there as well. That one again is very easy because it's codified in, uh, in statute. So we looked at that under three twenty-seven forty-six and there's establishment for any boats, hoister or marine, uh, boats and stuff. So we're able to look at the launching area there and establish a minimum zone in that area. But I'm going to show you something that kind of plays into fact here. These are the types of signs that we'll be installing. I'm also going to look at one buoy kind of in between the townhomes and the bridge to kind of bring more awareness to people that this is an idle speed zone. But if you're looking on your, on the maps here, this here starts the area around the bend and you can see where I have it in blue going around down to the bridge. We're doing what's called closing the gap. Because by statutory definitions, I, I would be able to do three hundred feet approaching the curve on either side. I'd be able to do three hundred feet approaching the bridge. On the canoe kayak launcher, I think I have five hundred feet either side of that area. And I could do that, but that would leave gaps in there that people can get up on speed again and get going. So they said, well, you're, you're going into an idle speed zone. I'm asking for a slow speed minimum wake, a slow speed minimum wake and an idle speed zone. By basically closing the gap in conjunction with the existing one on the other side of the bridge, I can do that and we can make that an all an idle speed zone and we, we define that in, in the ordinance as well. So with that in mind, that when we took a look at the bridges, again, those two were easy, the US nineteen and the trussel. And we can go three hundred feet either side. We're going to be looking at probably about, uh, if you look at these little yellow pin marks, uh, using the coordinates that I built into Google Earth, was able to drop them right in there. And, uh, putting some up on the bridge and fender themselves on the alternate nineteen bridge. And then the rest of them are going to be either boot, uh, pilings or on the canoe kayak launch ramp, I'll have a sign. The buoy, like I had mentioned, whoop. Almost had it going good. The buoy that I was talking about is right there. I want to have that in the water just to kind of bring a more of an awareness to that area that it's still an idle speed zone. Uh, and then they would be able to come back on plane, coming out of that area, whoop. All right. Coming out of that area and then around the bends as they approach into the, the bridges again. So you can see where those things would, uh, start there. So that was everything that we had come into play. I think we accomplished quite a bit in here, in this ordinance to, to safeguard, uh, the citizens and, and, uh, boaters on the, uh, waterway.
Thank you, uh, Major Young. Thank you for your hard work solving this problem. This is the first reading, we have one more reading and what's after that?
Uh, after, once it's, uh, it goes through the second reading, we'll have a two weeks of advertisement, then the second reading. You adopt it to form. I have to do the application with the state at that point. I'll send that off with all the, uh, information and, uh, it'll go off to Tallahassee. The US, uh, Army Corps of Engineers and the Coast Guard will have to sign off on it and the state will authorize it. They'll send it back. Once it comes back to us, we cannot make any changes to the ordinance without it going back for another review. I did work this out initially when I wrote the ordinance, I worked with FWC up in Tallahassee. I did send it through the city attorney's office. They vetted it for me, uh, quite extensively. I wanted to bring this package forward to you, ready to go. So there, there's really not, nothing in it that is, uh, you know, outside of the realm of what's needed in the area.
Thank you. Also like to thank the residents of the Anclot Point Townhomes for bringing it to my attention. It's a safety issue and I'm glad we're going to solve it soon. Any commission comment?
Yes, thank you, Jeff. Um, I actually, since this hasn't gone to second reading, I brought up a few months ago about Whitcomb Bayou. And I know that during manatee season, we have no wake zone. Um, we have idle speed coming into Whitcomb Bayou, uh, and then idle speed coming through that little bridge.
I should have, I should have, I should have said something off the, off the beginning. The reason why, initially I wanted to just start on the existing ordinance and update it and make some changes to it and put these in there. When I was working with FWC early on, they said, any changes you make to that ordinance opens up and subjects the entire ordinance to scrutiny under the current regulations. And they go, and looking at that, you'll probably lose most of your idle speed zones that you already have in existence. So I said, okay, well, how do I go about this then? And they're the ones that guided me and said, well, you just have to do a new ordinance. If I could try to go back and try to correct any ordinance on the other one, the existing one, uh, the city attorney's office, they, they were asking me, well, I don't think that's right. And then they checked into it and worked through the state and that is exactly how it was.
I just thought since there's a bridge there, maybe it could be somehow included. Um, only because I, I get complaints from the residents around Whitcomb Bayou, um, because of the high speeds.
At what, which bridge?
There's the bridge at MLK in South Spring coming through there. It's, it's idle no wake zone and then you get into the bayou and it's all ass. So, you know, it, it does create some erosion around Whitcomb Bayou and, and then people are concerned with the, the speed in, in, in that bayou. So that's been brought up to me.
This project was two years here, I believe, or a little over a year and a half probably, right? And it's, it is very intensive to get and go through, doing things on the water. Um, if there's one in the existing ordinance we could look at, but if you want to go add that on there, I'll have to continue on here.
Can be done now.
I, I, I would have to take a look at it and then I can check with, with Tallahassee and with this city.
We can look at it separately, but let's not include it with that. It took us too long to get to this point.
Yeah, I would not cloud, I would not cloud this one with anything. There's too much of a.
Yeah, I don't want to cloud it. I just, my question was, is there any way that we can?
I don't know the answer, but I can find out, I'll check on that.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Carr, you have a question?
Uh, no, I just, you know, I, I appreciate the effort of taking a proactive approach, um, from our police department and not waiting for someone to get hurt. Um, as a commissioner, that's one of the most frustrating things I've experienced, uh, with government. And anytime I talk to other organizations, it's, they say, well, no one's been killed there, no one's been hurt there, so we can't make the change. And that just drives me crazy and it's disrespectful, I think, to the residents and everyone else. But thank you for taking this approach, uh, without having to lose, that I'm aware of. I mean, maybe someone's been hurt in the river there before, but, um, thank you for your hard work with this. And I know some boaters probably won't like it, but again, if it's a safety issue, I think it's, uh, well deserved and thank you for your hard work.
I think it's going to have minimal impacts on, on the boaters. It's not that big of an area, it's not the whole thing from alternate nineteen to US nineteen, but it will have some impact on it.
Well, that's.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, there's a lot of paddlers in that area too.
Again, that comes from, you know, the city manager was adamant about getting that area looked at, uh, with the canoe kayak launch area and safeguarding. And that's why we really went with closing the gap in that area, uh, with that in mind as well.
I've got one other area to bring up since, uh, Commissioner Seaver brought up one. Um, I've had complaints about Sunset Beach and jet skiers in that areas and boats coming in, uh, I would say pretty fast into the boat ramp area where swimmers are and so on. Um, so I could just make a recommendation at some point, we look at that also, um, on how that's designed and that approach coming into the boat ramp and how people interact with the swimmers and jet skis and et cetera. Thanks.
Thank you. We're now going to the public comment.
Thank you for your time. Uh, my name's Doug Natosi. I live at eleven oh two Flying Fish Tarpon Springs, seven two seven nine four two six eight six nine. I'm a resident and I live on the Anclot River, uh, east of Alt nineteen. I'm also a board member of the Anclot Point Townhomes and I'm rep- I'm also a board member of the Anclot Point Townhomes and I'm representing the association and my family. My experience in the matter of boating includes 27 years as a state peace officer, 17 of those assigned to the State Marine Patrol Division of the States of the US's seventh largest boating state, and in 10 years running the agency after that. I'm a graduate of the US Coast Guard National Boarding School and the FBI National Academy. And then I have 11 years in the industry in the private sector, working for the largest boat builder in the country and now serve as the president of Marine Jet Power. So essentially my life is boating. It's been for my entire life with my family. And top of that, I've boated throughout the US, Europe, Middle East and Africa, so both professionally and personally. I've testified as an expert witness in state courts and marine cases. I've supervised hundreds of marine-related accidents and fatalities in 27 years. I currently own two boats on the river. And the issue of boating, of boating safety is something I'm knowledgeable and experienced in and I have a great respect for the water. Boating is a huge part of our lives and a huge part of this community. Few places that I have traveled throughout the world, I have seen a section of waters unsafe and as prime for a major accident as the Anclot east of the Alt 19 Bridge. We have numerous videos which capture near collisions. Vessels traveling 30 to 50 miles an hour in the stretch from the bridge to the first curve. And that's a .2 mile section of river. Vessels on plane underneath the Alt 19 Bridge, full speed underneath the bridge. Jet skis racing in groups 30 to 50 miles an hour. Vessels traveling 10 to 12 feet off the ends of docks on plane with our kayakers and fishermen in the water, totally blindsided with a total lack of visibility of who could be in those areas fishing in the channels. I know of two cases in the past year personally of residents that have been capsized in their kayaks. Under Florida State Code, municipalities are granted the authority to establish boating restricted areas, specifically within 300 feet of our bridges and spans and 300 feet of either side of a blind, narrow channel and areas of restricted visibility. Nearly two years ago, we approached the mayor and his staff and showed them the hazards and they listened. They observed the problems themselves, enlisted the state's experts with FWC and they formed a group that traveled the river on FWC boats and clearly saw the problem. After FWC and TPD investigated, they agreed, and yes, state and local government can't agree on occasions, that the situation here is serious and warrants placing restricted zones on sections of the river for safety concerns as granted the city authorization to proceed. The river traffic is increasing because of the new kayak launch ramp. And it's a great asset for bringing revenue and recreational opportunities into the city. The no wake issue was not a consideration during that process. The success of what that has brought, we're seeing fruits bear from developing. You build it, they will come. Safety here is paramount and this body has the vested authority to codify into city code as authorized by FWC in full compliance under the state code. Limited restrictions based on proven safety recommendations and best practices produced by our police department and FWC. These provisions do not prevent or restrict access. They do not prohibit boating. They grant the right of safe passage on local state waters as well as federal navigable waterways with the proper safety limits defined in code. Everyone can still use the waterway. They enhance our safety. We urge the city to adopt the recommendations into code and provide the users a safe waterway for all. William Arthur Ward said, "The persistent complaints about the wind, the optimist expects it to change, the realist adjusts the sails." All we're asking, adjust the sails. Everyone can still use the waterways, just in a safer, safer manner. I welcome your comments and questions. I'd personally like to thank the chief, the mayor for the time and listening to us. If you want, I have a USB drive with a number of videos if anyone has any questions and questions what we're saying. It's just a matter of time. We have a great place here and we just want to keep it safe. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Any other comments?
Good evening. Kristy McCumber, 1114 Flying Fish Lane. I also live in the Anclot Point Townhomes and I just moved in about six months ago. And I was shocked to see the dock and boats just flying right at the end of the dock. So that just really surprised me. I'd never seen that before. I am actually in the water almost every day. I'm in the kayak. I have a bright yellow kayak and it's great, except for that blind curve. I can't tell you how many times I can hear the motorboats coming and I'm like trying to get out of the way, trying to figure out where I can go because I know that they're flying and they're going to come around the corner. And I haven't capsized yet, you know, so hopefully that won't happen. Even my daughter is 15, 16, and she tried out the stand-up paddleboard for the first time. And she was right at our dock. She was actually holding on to the edge of the dock. And a boat came out from underneath the bridge and just took off on plane. And she's like holding on to the dock on a fall off. They had no care whatsoever, didn't notice. I'm not really sure what happened, but I mean, she was very scared. And so I'm worried about the safety. I see a lot of kayakers out there, especially with the new boat ramp in there. I saw two gentlemen out this morning and they didn't even realize that it was not a no wake zone. They just assumed it was. And I was like, no. So I really feel that it's a major safety issue and for me to be out in the kayak and just watching it out my window, it's very scary. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Do we have any other comments? No? Please come forward.
My name is Don Armour, 1126 Flying Fish Lane. I'm a new residence of Florida and also of Tarpon Springs. I moved here because I saw the dance move of the police department and the fire department and that's the reason I moved here. Good job. So all this is new to me, but I'm a boater, been a boater over 50 years. So I took my boat up the river to the US 19 Bridge at high tide. Very interesting ride up there. I don't know how people can go on plane and go any faster than 10 miles an hour up the river. So doing what's proposed is a, is a great improvement to what's up there. Came back at low tide. Low tide, the river is very skinny. The navigational path of the boat is very narrow. So if the river is 100 feet wide, you're probably dealing with 20 feet of maneuvering your boat and navigation. So the river gets very small when you come down river. So everything that's being proposed, I think is a great idea, a big safety issue. I don't know how people can even get on plane and maneuver that river from the US 19 Bridge to the alternate bridge. My recommendation would be make it a slow wake zone all the way. Going up the river, a boat passed me full speed and we were at low tide. So I was kind of amazed that he came within 10 feet of my boat going up the river. So it's a good proposal. I'm all for it. Thanks for your time. Thank you.
Thank you and welcome to Tarpon. Any other comments on this item? Please come forward.
Good evening. I'm Dennis Zabaldo and I live at 370 Coquina Drive in the Anclot Apartments.
Sir, would you please state your name and your address for the record?
Yes, Dennis Zabaldo, 370 Coquina Drive.
Thank you.
And one of the biggest problems we have too is when currents in the river are very strong in coming and outgoing. Whenever we're trying to dock at those apartments and the river is moving quickly and then other boats come around speeding around that corner. They like to roll their boats hard around that corner, be the James Bond type, you know? And it just throws a big wake and a big wave right at you while you're trying to maneuver, trying to dock, which makes it a very unsafe situation. Bangs your boat up and if you've ever had the gel coat replaced on your boat or dents pulled out of your pontoons or whatever it is, you'll know it doesn't come cheap. So I'm in favor of the proposal to slow the wake down and keep the wake from eroding the shoreline. And there's really no reason to be going around that curve real hard, throwing wakes to the left and right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Any other comments? Here none? I need a motion?
Motion approved.
Second. In roll call, please.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seaver?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor Alahuzis?
Yes, thank you. We're now going to the item number 15, which is Resolution 2017-38, Budget Resolution Fiscal Year 2017. City Attorney, if you please read the resolution.
Resolution 2017-38, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, mending the budget for the fiscal year 2016-17. That was a reading of Resolution 2017-38 by title only.
Thank you. Staff report.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Ron Haring, Finance Director. Budget Resolution 2017-38 is being brought before you to budget for items that were previously not budgeted for in the fiscal year 2017 budget. This would be the final budget resolution for fiscal year 2017. In the two-page cover letter, I have summarized the items on the attached resolution. But one item I wanted to point out is expenditures related to Hurricane Irma in the amount of $355,216. This is mostly for salaries and some supplies that were incurred during the hurricane event. Of this amount, $270,042 was expended in the general fund. We're going to be, I'm using unassigned fund balance to cover that. This is the only time unassigned fund balance has been used in the general fund in fiscal year 2017. But once FEMA reimburses a city for, for our, for these salaries and from what I hear, it's going to be 100%. And as the city manager mentioned earlier, we are in finance, working on the worksheets, getting them ready. We haven't met with our state representative yet, but we're, we're getting everything ready for, when they come in to look at all the project worksheets. But once they reimburse us, we will, the money will replenish the city's unassigned fund balance in the general fund and the other funds, water and sewer. This resolution was also reviewed by the Budget Advisory Committee last week. And if there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Haring. You answered my question.
Okay.
Any questions? Any comments? Any public comments on this item? Motion, please.
Motion approved.
Roll call.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seaver?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor Alahuzis?
Yes, thank you. The next two items, number 16 and 17 are quasi-judicial and they're both related. Will be discussed together, but we'll vote separately. Item number 16 is the ordinance 2017-27, Application 17-86, to vacate right-of-way of Tarpon Turtle IONX. This is a second reading and the city attorney will read the title and will explain the, the process.
This is ordinance number 2017-27, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, vacating and abandoning rights-of-way for 1,282.9 square feet of alley A, lying north of lots 24 through 26 of Lakeview subdivision and 1,314.7 square feet of alley B, lying east of lots 20 through 22 of Lakeview subdivision, providing for conditions, providing for findings, providing for future easements, providing for recordation in the public records of Pinellas County and providing an effective date. This is a quasi-judicial hearing. It's the second hearing. Therefore, I would ask the applicant, if the applicant is here and staff, as to whether or not there have been any changes from the first hearing. But before I do that, I'd like to go ahead and get you sworn in. If you can both stand up, raise your right hand and be sworn under oath, anyone that's going to speak on this particular agenda item. You swear that the testimony you're about to give is going to be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. So sworn. And I can also read 2017-33 if you'd like me to follow up. Okay. So let me go ahead and read that ordinance as well. Ordinance 2017-33, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, vacating and abandoning rights-of-way for 1,629 square feet of an unnamed alley lying east of lots 17 through 19 of Lakeview subdivision, providing for conditions, providing for findings, providing for future easements, providing for recordation in the public records of Pinellas County and providing an effective date. That also was the second final reading of ordinance 2017-33. So now would be the opportunity for staff and the applicant to acknowledge that there have been no substantial changes from the first reading. And if that is so, they're here to answer questions then.
Heather Earler, Planning and Zoning Director, and that is true. There has been no additional information that has come to light on these applications and I can answer any questions you may have.
Does the applicant have any additional information that they want to provide to the commission at this point? No, I'm seeing a shaking of the head from Mr. Pressman, no. So it's here for the board's consideration.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? I need a motion for item number 16, which is the Application 17-86.
Second.
In roll call, please.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seaver?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther? Mayor Alahuzis?
Yes. Now I need a motion for the ordinance 2017-33, Application 17-105.
Motion to approve.
In roll call.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seaver?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther? Mayor Alahuzis?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. See you guys. Take care. The next item on the agenda is item number 18, Resolution 2017-40, Public Works Reorganization. City Attorney will read the resolution.
Resolution 2017-40, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, authorizing changes in the Public Works Department organization, including reclassification of position and certain personnel, revising of a position description and providing for an effective date hereof. That was a reading of Resolution 2017-40 by title only.
Just before Tom gets started, this is another case where we have the opportunity with a retirement of a longtime employee to do some adjustments in the position. After this employee retired, of course, we had the hurricane. This necessity and showed the necessity of upgrading this. And by doing this change here during that time, our present parks maintenance supervisor stepped in and went over to the yard waste and did a great job and proved the need for this to be an upgraded position. So what this will allow us to do is to be able to laterally transfer that supervisor into that position without losing money since it brings it up to the grade. And then we'd be able to replace his position and stuff. So that's kind of the background Tom can give you, where the guts of it. But the ability to do that and again, the need for a supervisor was, was shown during the hurricane. He went over from his position and obviously we don't want to reward him by a salary cut or anything. So if we, we do this change, we can latterly transfer him to that position with his salary, which is top dot. And then we can hire at lesser, at lesser cost his present position. Tom, if you want to add anything else?
Yeah, Scott's had quite a bit of experience by parks supervisor as far as running the operations at the yard waste. And also prior to a number of years ago, doing some changes to the sanitation department, he actually handled internal trash pickup. So it was a perfect fit. It worked very well. I think it was another, again, another opportunity to do some minor changes to the parks department too that sorely needed. I'm open to any questions.
No, the only question that I have, thank you for discussing that earlier with me in your office. But the only question that I have is the pay scale compatible to the other city?
Yes, in this position it is.
Okay, yes. Thank you. Any commission comments, questions? Thank you. Any public comments on this item? Here none? I need a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
In roll call.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seaver?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor Alahuzis?
Yes. And we're now going to addendum to the regular session agenda, which is item number one. Cities Thrive Conference sponsorship for Peace for Tarpon requested by Commissioner Seaver. Commissioner Seaver, you want to talk about it?
Yes, I had the honor of being invited to go to New York again this year to be part of the Cities Thrive Conference. Last year I went and Tarpon Springs was one of 16 cities invited and I sat on a panel. There were actually four panels and spoke about our initiatives here in Tarpon Springs. There were about 200 people that attended that conference. So it was quite an opportunity to be able to go to New York and share what we're doing here in Tarpon Springs. We're the first trauma-informed community in the United States. Thanks to Peace for Tarpon and Robin is sitting in the audience and I would like to invite her to speak. But I cannot go this year. I still think it's very important that somebody does go and attend the conference and represent our city. And wanted to ask for some sponsorship for someone to go from Peace for Tarpon, a representative from Peace for Tarpon, even though they, they had asked for city officials. I have a background in mental health and that's why I went last year and I, I am involved with, with Peace for Tarpon. So I'm requesting that we help fund someone from Peace for Tarpon to, to attend this conference and follow up with last year's conference and represent our city. I think it's, it's something that's. I think it's something that is almost necessary for us to do.
It ended the conference was very beneficial to us?
Yes, well, and this is a follow-up conference to show what we've done, what progress we've made. The cities that were invited before, probably most of them will be invited again, and we're one of 16, so that's from the whole United States. So I think that's quite an honor for us to be included, and I feel like it'd be beneficial for someone to be there from Tarpon Springs. And since I can't go, I thought I would recommend someone from Peace for Tarpon.
Okay.
Peace for Tarpon.
Commissioner Carr, you have any comments, question?
Sure. Is there like a speaking, are they going to ask this individual to speak up there, is just more of a conference to attend?
The way it worked last year is 16 cities were selected, and there were four people on each panel, I was on one of the panels. And we talked about our city and our initiatives and what we have been doing in our city, and then we took questions from the audience, and there were about 200 people that came to that conference from across the United States, and being one of 16 cities to be invited was an honor for us. And I was quite amazed at how many people knew about Tarpon Springs, knew what we'd been doing, and were impressed, and we do now have, we're a model for other cities that are doing what we've been doing here in Tarpon.
Yeah, I guess the only thing I would ask is, I'm not equipped, I'm not, I mean, I know past Vice Mayor and Commissioner, sorry, Singer. I've seen her in events, and I think it's a great thing that she's doing. I'm not educated to speak on this topic at all, so. And I'm not sure, you said they're interested in seeing city officials, I'm not sure if anyone else has been discussed with or anything along those lines.
It's a mental health conference, my background is in mental health, and I know what's going on with Peace for Tarpon, and so that's why I went last year, and then I was re-invited to go back. Mental health is a big issue, an upcoming issue. We're number 50 out of 50 states in funding for mental health here in Florida, so there's a lot to be done. So, you know, I think it's important that we participate.
I don't have a problem with it, I think it's a great thing, Peace for Tarpon was recognized by Congress, I believe, am I correct in saying that? Recently, and it's a, they're setting an example across the country for something that someone from our town, little town in Tarpon Springs in the west coast of Florida, can have an impact across the United States, and if there's an opportunity for that, I think we should take advantage of it. And even if we look at it as a marketing standpoint amongst other cities, I mean, if we want to look at it that way, but I'm not really sure how this would balance from a city perspective, I've never been involved with sponsoring someone to go on a trip, so I mean, are we allowed to do that, can we do it? I don't know if I would go to the city attorney on that one, or?
The answer is you can absolutely do that, so long as there is a public benefit, and it seems to me, based upon the discussion I've heard so far, it would be considered a public benefit, and so you can use city funds to do that.
Okay, thanks.
You may want to, though, you know, decide tonight whether there's a specific person, and your motion should include that, and maybe a cap
Max.
as to how much you would allow for that expenditure.
We've asked for $1,100.
Okay.
Yeah, and again, that's the way I'd want, because, you know, we ran through this when we sponsored somewhere, Denver, it's easier for us to set an amount, last year was $1,100. To set that amount, give that to Peace for Tarpon, and let them, it's a lot easier for the accounting and stuff that we have to count to do that and stuff. We may, if we're chosen for the panel and stuff, some of that money might come back, and obviously, if some money came back to us like last year, they would reimburse us that money back. It's not a guarantee, we got $500 of it back last year, but that's no guarantee, so it's an $1,100 investment, we may get, you know, like last year, we may get up to 500 of that back, or whatever, we just can't guarantee that, so.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes, thank you. I do think it's important we have somebody there. I wish Commissioner Seber could go, but I know her schedule is not allowing her to, and I supported her going last year. This is completely out of my wheelhouse, 100%, so I'm out of the question. So I would definitely motion to approve that Commissioner Seber go, and we cap it at $1,100. And I know that, I've never used my travel budget for an half-year.
I would recommend you hold on the motion, because we want to hear from the Vice Mayor, Singer, who is going to go, so that way the motion will include that as well.
Let me redraw that motion, but say it is my desire that it's her that goes.
I mean, you can make the motion later if you like.
Yeah.
But let's hear what?
I can certainly motion whenever, but I wanted to just make sure that that's my desire, that's Commissioner Seber that goes to the conference because of her, sorry, Commissioner Singer. Commissioner Singer, I'm still jet-lagged, I apologize, that goes to the conference because of her experience on this board, representing Tarpon Springs all over the country, and the most knowledgeable person in Tarpon Springs.
I'm going to ask you to get on the podium, if you want to tell us. Commissioner, yes, please.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, Chief, everybody. Yes, I completely am delighted that New York City Mayor de Blasio's office invited Tarpon Springs to be represented for a second year in a row. Vice Mayor Banther, unfortunately, I will not be able to go because I'm going to be in Philadelphia also speaking about Tarpon Springs. We're getting called to a lot of different locations. I'd like to take this opportunity to share with the board that in January, Tarpon Springs is going to be hosting the first gathering of the national Peace for Communities, because there are three other cities in the United States following our model. Pinellas County is, I just received an email that Peace for Pinellas is about to get started, Peace for Port St. Lucie. I was in Orlando talking to the Director of Health, because Orlando's interested, and Orange County is also interested in following our model. So I think it's great that the little city, as you said, of Tarpon Springs is nationally recognized, we're very, very well-known nationally, and the city government as being an active partner always is something that people are very pleased with, and it's a kind of a new twist, rather than an agency or a nonprofit, for city government to be actively involved is quite impressive to other communities. I did speak with the Vice Chair, Mary Shero, of Peace for Tarpon, she is available to travel that day and has expressed her willingness to go. So I'd be happy to give her the good news that she is being supported in this, and she would come back, of course, and give a report to the, to y'all about her experience and what came out of it.
Do you feel the Vice Chair, Mary Shero, she has the mental health experience to cover that?
Yes, Mary Shero has been involved with Peace for Tarpon since day one. She's a community partner, and she's very, very active, speaks very well to all of the topics that will be covered, and I think she'd be a great representative. Yeah. Yes.
Maybe Commissioner Seber can get with her, tell her what took place.
Well, there was a lot of communication before I went last year with phone conferences and questions that I was expected to answer and speak on, so all that information will be shared with them as well.
Thank you. Any public comments on this item? You're none? Vice Mayor, do you still want to make the motion?
Yes.
To include the name of the person?
If.
And the cap of the money?
If Commissioner Singer, Singer says they're proper to go, then I fully trust her. So I would motion that we approve this for the Vice Chairman of Peace for Tarpon, is that our title, Vice Chairman?
Yes.
Yeah. And with a cap of $100.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Yeah, I have a second.
All right, thank you. In roll call.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor Alhuzis?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck to you. The item number two is the appointment of the VOC member of the General Employee Pension Board. Before I turn it over to Vice Mayor Banther, I'd like to ask our city attorney a question. Is it requirement that we have a VOC member on this board?
That's a good question, I'd have to take a look at your code real quick. Irene, do you have the code here?
I do.
Okay, let me grab that.
The reason I'm asking that is because the Police and Fire Pension Board, they do not, we do not have a VOC member.
It's been as long as I know, that's all I can say.
Well, you're right, because I served two years when I was a Commissioner, same time when I was serving for the PHDA.
Mayor, if I may?
You got to go?
No, 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 I'm still good. I'm just saying, if they don't find that it's required, I have been on that board for a year, and I see no reason why we should require somebody if it's not. Require. If it is, then we got to do it.
This is why I asked the question, yeah. Is it getting close for you to go?
I'm good, I got ten minutes.
You're good? Okay.
I won't, I won't, I won't turn into a pumpkin.
Okay.
I'm dead killing it for you, buddy. My memory serves me correct.
Yeah.
Okay, section 2-37, Pren A1A, provides, it consists of five members, the Finance Director, the Personnel Director, and a Commissioner selected by consensus of the Board of Commissioners. So it would include a Commissioner.
What day does that meet, in time?
I think it's every quarter, right?
It's on the quarter and?
It's quarterly.
It's quarterly.
It's usually in the morning, daytime.
I think the time varies from the morning versus the afternoon, depending on the Commissioner.
It's been in the mornings, and mornings are my busiest time, I've missed the last two, and that's just not fair to the board, I keep missing the meetings.
What exactly does it entail?
It's like, it's, if I might be frank, it's a very light version of budget advisory.
Okay.
Very light version.
All right.
The Finance Advisor just explains the different investments?
And just once a quarter?
Yes.
You can't do it during the day, right?
I can't do day meetings, no.
Since I just resigned from the Homeless Leadership Board.
Take that one.
I'll do it.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Seber.
I just finished saying I'm not doing it, but I will.
The employees will be very happy with that, like, yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want to have a motion to a pointer?
Yeah.
Emotion?
Well, I need to ask for, yeah, go ahead and make a motion.
I would motion to point Commissioner Seber to the employment.
Do I have a second?
I have a second to that.
Do we have any public comments on this item? No? Any other commission comment? Thank you again. Roll call, please.
I do work too.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor Alhuzis?
Yes. Well, that concludes the regular session agenda, and we'll go to staff comment.
No comments, Mayor, thank you.
City Attorney, Tom, thank you for welcoming back home.
Well, thank you very much, and the reason that I'm here is that Jay was in trial the last couple of days, he's exhausted. He asked me to cover, and I said absolutely.
Yeah. Mr. Licorice?
I just want to thank our visitors, you want to talk a little bit about what I'm wearing tonight?
And me too.
About our visitors? We'll go ahead and talk about that.
Well, I will later.
Okay.
Yeah.
He'll tell you later why I'm wearing this.
I want to tell you that you look very nice, though.
Thank you. Thank you, I need all the help and luck I can get, so, the good charm does me well.
Madam, sir.
I have no comment.
No. Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes, thank you, and I wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and Mark, if you could put on some light agenda in January, no later than February, just a overall discussion, because we've had different things of maybe some overarching policies, or we review our policies for street closures for events, both on the Sponge Dock and downtown, so we kind of review what we have in place, we can make changes if the board deems it, and that way, when, we don't have the awkward moment when we're pulling one item because we don't like what that particular thing's doing, rather, we have the overarching discussion about it, and maybe bring in the merchant association, the chamber, and whoever else is involved in these things, so we can kind of make a master plan for 2018 that I think would better suit the merchants as a whole down there.
Commissioner Seber?
Yeah, just to add to that, we had our seafood festival this past weekend, it was jam-packed, and I talked to Julie today, and it was good for everyone, so I appreciate us having that event.
You did a great job.
Yes. I just wanted to say about this is that these are actual beans and spices from Ecuador, so you know what you're wearing. And I did have some extra brochures, and I'll let you talk about the delegation from Ecuador, so.
Go ahead and talk, oh you.
Well, we had a delegation here from Ecuador, from Puyyo, and that's up in the mountains in the rainforest area, and they were here to observe and to learn from us about our wastewater treatment plant and our RO plant, and so we spent, some of us spent the day doing that with them, and we'll be with them tomorrow and the next day too. But it was very interesting to listen to what they do in Ecuador, and they want to learn from us about tourism too, because they would like to attract and market their country more, and learn maybe what we do here in Tarpon Springs to attract tourism and how we market Tarpon Springs. So I enjoyed meeting them, and I'll be seeing them tomorrow as well. They gave us gifts, including these necklaces and tiny spears that they use, because they don't use guns, and they still have, in their jungles, they have seven different villages that still live like they did thousands of years ago, or hundreds of years ago.
Oh, right.
The tribes, yes, and they all have their own dialects, and it was very interesting to learn more about that portion of Ecuador. Most people know the water and the beaches, but not as much in the mountains, and it sounds very adventurous. So I enjoyed meeting them, and we'll see them again tomorrow. And so I'm going to just pass these down, one for Susan, well, you have one, Mayor, but whoever, I gave you one already.
I've got one, yeah.
And then I also want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, and just mention that Rotary is sponsoring a Stone Crab Festival this Saturday at Craig Park from 2:00 to 6:00, and it's a fundraiser for Rotary of Tarpon Springs, so we hope to see some people there. We're going to have a band, Stone Crabs, All You Can Eat, Beer Truck, so it's a lot of fun.
You going to tell us about the Wine Walk?
Oh, the Wine Walk is on the 25th, which starts either downtown at One Amazing Find or Wine at the Docks, and it's always a fun event, you get to visit the merchants in town and do 25 wine tastings, and that's only a bottle of wine over four hours, so it's not too much wine. And we have a trolley that takes visitors between the docks and downtown, so it's been going on for about six years, it's a nice event.
Thank you. Wanted to just announce it's World Diabetes Day, someone very special to me that I live with has type 1 diabetes. She does an incredible amount of work on a daily basis just to live. It's something that I just want to bring awareness to amongst the city. It's one of those things that no matter what you eat, you have to count the carbs, you have to appropriate the right insulin amount and do the ratio, and it's pretty incredible what some of these individuals that are diagnosed at such a young age have to do to stay alive, and I'm very grateful for the technologies that have come out, so my wife could continue living, and we have a great life. A couple other things, want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, safe travels to everyone that's throughout Tarpon Springs that are leaving town or coming into town. Also want to make it aware, it's Small Business Weekend, I believe it's a Saturday following Thanksgiving. It's ironic, American Express sponsors this event because they charge a ridiculous amount of money to the small businesses, but if you could use cash or check, that would be appreciated, I think, to the small businesses. Let's see, that one, that one, that one. I also want to say my condolences, send my condolences to the Roy Halliday family, he was a local professional baseball player that passed away recently on his airplane tragically in the Gulf of Mexico, just off our coast. He lived off Keystone Road, he's got two young boys, and he leaves two young boys and a wife at home, so at Memorial Service for him tonight at Spectrum Field, I had the opportunity to interact with him some when I worked with the Blue Jays in college. Great guy, it's a tragedy to see that he left this world too soon. And then also, City Manager, I want to follow up about, if we could get it somewhere on an agenda in the near future, about some type of substation conversation or discussion of the police station that I brought up a few meetings back. If there's a way that we could look at still combating the crime and some of the just nuisances that are going on around Spring Bayou. I've had multiple calls from different residents in different areas around the bayous and business owners still. It seems to be an issue that is ongoing, regardless of what happens with the Sun Bay Motel, I think that's something that we need to at least look at and have a discussion about, so, thank you.
Thank you. I have several announcements to make, one is on November 25th and 26th, we have the Thanksgiving Arts and Crafts Festival on Tarpon Avenue. That's from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Friday, December 1st, we have the event, there is a snow place like Tarpon Springs, it's probably the most popular event that we get once a year. event that we get once a year. That starts at five p.m. to ten p.m. At the same night, December first, we have the Holiday Boat Parade, you guys can use your boat, you know? Now that you're going to be safe. Thank you. Also, I'd like to welcome to Tarpon Springs Vice Mayor Mejia and their staff, their staff from Paio, the city of Paio, they came here to learn about our reverse osmosis plan, and they're very excited. This is what they did all day today, learning about the reverse osmosis, and tomorrow, they're going to learn about our sewer plant, and at the same time, we're going to be talking about different issues that they have, and providing with different information that is going to be very helpful to them. Also like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, and please be safe. Well, that concludes the regular session meeting, and it's adjourned at seven fifty-nine.
Are you happy, David?
Better on time, David? Look at that, that's what I said, fifty-nine, I could have said eight o'clock, but I get it, yeah?
You all have a good Thanksgiving.
You too, take care.
I will.
Be careful, drive careful out there. Are you coming back for Thanksgiving?
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, I'm back on Monday, yeah.
Oh, okay.